Oh, do me a favor, text us if you have bonus work. Text Bill and tell him not to wait for me to tell him. I just want to leave between five and six, I just don't want to go. Let's go pick a set.
When is the good time for you to sit down? Exceptions or grand part of states.
All right, the motion on the floor is octapass as amended. Any discussion before we take a vote? Then without objection, we will take a vote. All in favor of the motion of octapass as amended, please raise your hand. All right, all opposed? Let's vote. So if everyone was in favor, except for Representative Stuckey, who was opposed? Representative Stuckey, would you like to speak to your... All right. All right, next. We'll jump to... The care representative. So... LD 1258. This is an act to amend the main medical use of marijuana act with regard to good business practices. And let me say upfront how I want to approach this and how in conversations with the committee I'd like to approach this. There are essentially three bills that deal with topics that are around some of the same issues. That's LD 5, LD 726, LD 1258. LD 5, which is an act to remove the limit on the number of patients a primary caregiver may provide for under the medical marijuana laws, that bill is basically a provision which is already included in LD 1258. So I don't know whether we want to do that now or later. I think some of the conversations would be, we would at some point go octapass on LD 5 and focus on that provision in 1258. Which then would leave us with LD 726 and 1258. So there are provisions in these put out by different stakeholders within the medical marijuana community. And we have... The thinking currently is, in sitting down with some of the stakeholders in different groups, coming up with a comprehensive package and using 1258 as the single vehicle for that. So we'll get to that, but first, Michael, if you could take us away on 1258.
Okay, so LD 1258 is an act to amend the main medical use of marijuana act with regard to good business practices. This bill amends the main medical use of marijuana act in the following ways. Number one, it clarifies that a primary caregiver may cultivate up to six marijuana plants for each of up to five qualifying patients. Number two, it allows a primary caregiver to employ or contract with more than one person to assist with the duties required of that primary caregiver. The Department of Health and Human Services is required to adopt rules regarding the licensing of these assistance. Number three, it allows the department to make onsite assessments of registered primary caregivers who cultivate marijuana for three or more registered patients at a time to ensure compliance. For three or more registered patients at a time to ensure compliance. Number four, it allows a registered primary caregiver to transfer excess prepared marijuana to a qualifying patient for reasonable compensation. Number five, it provides that a primary caregiver or registered dispensary that receives compensation from a qualifying patient for the costs associated with cultivating marijuana for that qualifying patient or assisting that qualifying patient is required to register as a seller with a state tax assessor and collect and remit sales tax. Under the current law, marijuana is specifically excluded from the sales tax exemption for medicines. And then there's also some unallocated language that I have listed in the column underneath the statutory provisions that are impacted, which states that development of employment or contract or license and the department shall develop by rule licensing requirements, qualifications, and procedures for persons engaged by primary caregivers pursuant to Title 22 as employees or independent contractors on a full-time, temporary, or seasonal basis and that rules adopted pursuant to this section of routine technical rules. I know that there's just a conversation about bringing in some other aspects of some other bills into 1258. I just wanted to make the committee aware that the last purple attachment here deals with... It's a letter in partial support of 1258 from the department with comments on each section, and that was distributed at the public hearing on 1258.
So I'd like to... And I don't know if you have a copy of this or...
I'm getting it.
All right. So I sat down, myself and Representative Sanderson, sat down with advocates of both the dispensaries and the caregivers yesterday. And we went through some of the items on the table and saw where we could come to some common agreement. So I have essentially nine points, and as I say, Representative Sanderson and myself sat down in this conversation. We've also spoken with Representative Tina and Senator Haskell about a lot of these and all of these as well. And there was a lot of, at least with the individuals involved in that conversation, a lot of areas where we found some good agreement. So essentially nine points here. The only point where there's still not complete agreement on is point one. So I'm going to start with point... Go from point two to point nine. And we go through them individually, explain kind of some of the thought process behind it. And then we'll come back to point one, which is the only one that was... With the individuals involved in that conversation, there is a little bit of disagreement over still. But point two, so it allows a primary caregiver to employ or contract with more than one person to assist with the duties required of that primary caregiver. The Department of Health and Human Services is required to adopt rules regarding the licensing of these assistance. This is right out of Representative Sanderson's bill, 1258. So we felt all right to just move that in as is. Point three was, it allows the Department of Health and Human Services to make onsite assessments of registered primary caregivers to ensure compliance. DHHS must get 24 hours' notice for onsite assessments to registered primary caregivers who grow their product at their personal homes. DHHS may perform onsite assessments without notice for registered primary caregivers who grow at off-site locations. So this point was wanting to... So it sounds like there's two distinctions here, but really there's three distinctions here. So first you have primary caregivers who are growing at off-site locations. So that's essentially business locations separate from their personal home. Since there was, in that situation, it is more reasonable to expect the combination where you can have an assessment without notice like the dispensaries are subject to. The point was brought up in the public testimony a lot though about, you know, when someone's growing at their own home, they might show up, no one's there. And that it's not a worthwhile use of time for the person doing the assessment. And it's also, you know, you're coming into someone's personal home. So there would be a requirement for 24-hour notice there. The third distinction there is not readily obvious, but is that we're specifying specifically registered primary caregivers. So if you are a caregiver who is able to legally operate without having to register, you would not be subject to this. If you're someone who is, you know, simply operating with... For family members or outside of those requirements to be registered as a primary caregiver, you would not be subject to that. Point four, it provides that a primary caregiver or registered dispensary that received compensation from a qualifying patient for the costs associated with cultivating marijuana for that qualifying patient or assisting that qualifying patient is required to register as a seller with a state tax assessor and collect and remit sales tax. Under the current law, marijuana is specifically excluded from the sales tax exemption for medicine. Again, this is right out of 1258. The concern that was brought up with this is that... Said we would accept that if there was more clarity around the issue around the sales and sales tax issue, which is why, which was what brings us to point number five, which is it requires that a state tax category shall be created for registered primary caregivers. Now that that's been, that's been an issue, the lack of clarity around this, and that when a dispensary tries to pay their sales taxes, a category for them. Caregiver tries to do that, there isn't a category, and that creates some difficulties. So trying to create some clarity around that to make it easier for people who are trying to pay their taxes and operate as a legitimate business, to make it as easy as possible for them to do so. Point six, it provides that registered caregivers may transfer any amount of excess prepared marijuana for reasonable compensation to another registered caregiver or a registered dispensary. And point seven kind of goes in line with that. It provides that registered dispensaries may transfer any amount of prepared marijuana for reasonable compensation to another registered dispensary or a registered caregiver. There were already some provisions in here to lift some of the restrictions on caregivers being able to transfer and sell excess marijuana to dispensaries. In the conversations we had there, my feeling is, and I think the feelings of those involved in this conversation, were we'd really like to see free trade between caregivers and dispensaries. Taking patients out of this box for a moment. But if you have excess, if you have excess medical marijuana and you're just trading back and forth between dispensaries and caregivers, we'd like to potentially see that that be something, that there aren't all these restrictions on being able to sell between different sellers that are already licensed and able to sell themselves. Point eight, it requires the Department of Health and Human Services to adopt routine technical rules governing the manner in which the department considered an application for and a renewal of a registry identification. I'm sorry, that's a pardon for a primary caregiver. This is right out of 726. There was one objection raised about this, which was the fact that it would be routine technical rules. There was some initial terms raised that maybe they should be major substantive rules. Concern with that is, everything under this program is routine technical rules. And so to create one thing that's major substantive, that would be breaking with everything else that exists under this act. And furthermore, it's been pointed out, and I know this to be true because I've been to some of these public hearings, when you have routine technical rules, there is a public hearing. In fact, I was at one of those public hearings a couple of years ago when some of these rule changes were being proposed, and there was a lot of conflict about that. And I think some of those rules got delayed by not being adopted because of it. And if something is adopted, but so... And Representative Sanderson speaks to this very well. With routine technical rules versus major substantive rules, emergency rules can go into place immediately without a public hearing. Eventually it comes back to the legislature, we have that public hearing. But by that point, the rules have already been in effect for a while. With routine technical rules, that public hearing has to occur first because unlike major substantive rules, the legislature's not always in session to deal with them. If there was something that was proposed and changed, I mean, like, that can always come forward to the legislature and we can change itself. But the biggest thing is, these rules, everything else under this program is routine technical. And so it would be really breaking from everything else in the program to have just one isolated thing that is major substantive rules. And point nine, it establishes that a registered dispensary shall qualify upon request as a for-profit business. So that's points two through nine. And that, from the individuals involved in that conversation, there was... There was, there seemed to be consensus on. Point one, to get back to the, this is the one point that there's still a little discussion on. It clarifies that a registered primary caregiver may cultivate up to six marijuana plants for each of up to five qualifying patients in any given month. It allows a registered primary caregiver to transfer excess prepared marijuana to up to 10 additional qualifying patients in any given month for reasonable compensation. So what this essentially does, and what this essentially does is leaves the limit in place, on the plant limit, of 30 plants while growing the patient cap to 15. And so you've got the five, your five first patients that qualify you for being able to grow up to the 30 plants. But then if you have additional products available after that, the caregiver would be able to sell to up to 10 additional patients. And also in this, as is currently proposed, we're clarifying, because this was an issue that has come up a lot, this question of what does this patient cap mean? You know, there's the question of, so currently where it's five patients, it's five patients add. Some interpret this as, you know, five patients at any given time, so what does that mean? We've heard testimony from one individual came up and said that he's got four patients, and then he's got that five that slot he uses as a revolving door. We wanted to clarify that, and we felt, at least I felt, that one way to clarify that was to establish a clear time period in which that is measured. So by saying that it's, we measure that patient count in a given month. So that means that if your patient cap is 15, then there's no question on... If you have, you know, 15 patients in July, well, then, you know, if you've served 15 individual different people in July, then there's no question about whether or not you're compliant or not compliant. It clarifies that. Of course, the debate on that, or the... Some of the disagreement on that between some of the stakeholders for the caregivers and the stakeholders for the dispensaries comes from the question of how much that patient cap should go up or if it should go up at all. And it's worthwhile to remember that the original proposal was to eliminate the cap completely. But we've kind of, at least in some of the conversations we've come back on, I know some have thrown out the number of 20 patients, some have thrown out the number of 10 patients. Maybe we split the baby and we land on 15. So that's the current thought process here. And I want to say, before we go forward on this, I don't expect that we are actually going to vote on this today because there are some other stakeholders we want to get involved in this conversation and make sure that we're going to have something that's going to have the best chance of actually passing through the legislature and passing through across the governor's desk and becoming law. But this is kind of where we are right now in this process on this. So that being said, questions, discussion from the committee? I'll start with Senator Haskell and Representative Burris.
Thank you very much. I'm wondering if we can talk about kind of the taxation pieces that are in here? We've got a couple folks here who've been here all day that we asked to come back so they could answer questions about taxation. And this is Mr. Morris, who is the financial consultant for fiscal, financial, which I thought was a great name. And his son spoke when I started, actually, the thoughts on this. And in particular...
The mic there? Oh, was that a case?
Sorry. And in particular, number five, where you said that a state tax category must, shall be created? I wondered if it should be created or identified? In other words, if they say, guys, all the people, I'm sorry, all the individuals opt to, you know, contract fill out under a certain category, that that might be a little easier for the State Department of Medical Services than to try and find the category and find a name for it as opposed to identifying one? So I'd be interested in your thoughts about that, as well as number nine, which is the one about, you know, for-profit businesses, kind of your experience with and interact with people around the country.
Right now, when you sign up for your sales tax form, there's two categories that you're placed under. When we sign up our clients, we put them under order cultural specialist. When it comes back, it's usually under grower or florist. Neither one of them is accurate. So that's one thing that I think the state should address is that these, you know, the caregiver should be categorized as order cultural specialist. That's one of your colleagues who's a lawyer, who has a bill in session. He's my lawyer, and that's what he told us, that we should be classifying these, you know, the caregivers as. So that's what we've been doing. As far as the for-profit, from what I understand, the for-profit versus the nonprofit, the reason that the dispensaries want to go for-profit is at this point, it's difficult for them to get investors to come on board, and it's difficult for them to establish an equity in their business. Like, right now, they, in order, like, if they wanted to sell their business, it would be very difficult for them because they have no equity in the business. And I think that's basically the difference in this situation is that the for-profit dispensaries, the non-for-profit dispensaries are looking to establish an equity position so that they can retrieve some of the money that they put into the business. so that they can retrieve some of the money that they put into the business.
Representative Burris?
Thank you, Senator. I've got questions, I've got a couple of different questions. One, I think I want to direct you, is like, who's part of the stakeholder group? And who's part of the proposed further stakeholder group? I'd like to know.
Sure. So the individuals that we spoke with representing, and I hope I'm not remembering. So we had, for representing some of the caregivers, we had Hillary Lister, Shenabellows, we had Keith Herrick. On the dispensary side, we had Laura Harper, Dan Walker, and then myself and Deb Sanderson.
Okay. Can I ask one more?
Yes, absolutely.
About visiting, number three, there's nothing, I know I brought this up earlier, but there was some, we had multiple, multiple people that were concerned about turning on a light, so that's not addressed in here at all.
Yeah, and practically, we can bring some people up in a little bit just to speak to that.
So I'd like that to be considered. And then the last part was, I know we were also talking about caregivers, like if they had a patient who only needed a quarter of, how to do that partial patient? You know, like if they have somebody who needs like half the marijuana, you know, so I was wondering about if that could be --
Yeah, we could speak to that too. I think part of the thinking is that, of course, if you were to lift the cap completely, that would completely alleviate that problem, but it would also, but even just raising the cap somewhat helps alleviate that problem as well.
Or maybe we put something in here saying 50% of the amount, you know, like three plants can go to one person, or something like that? I don't know. I'm just --
Yeah, all ideas are current. Look, I know we talked about a couple of different pieces related to that, but every idea that we came up with seemed to just complicate things a lot more than was. So if you were able to think of something that works better than anything, we, you know, we're certainly open to it.
Thank you.
Yes, but let's continue on the tax piece, so Senator Haskell.
Right, and I think there's just a couple other things that may be interesting to folks, and that is the sales tax piece and what that is collected on. Can you give us some sense about around the --
There's confusion right now as to what is, what is sales tax going to be collected for. A lot of caregivers feel as though they don't need to pay the sales tax because they're providing a service. There's a IRS 28E, it's called, it's a rule, that would you be able to sell your, would you be able to sell your product, would you be able to sell your service without the product being there? In this situation, I don't think it is. And then also with the IRS, when you're doing your sales tax form, the IRS does not allow any deductions on your, in this situation, it would be your Schedule C, they do not allow deductions against your income, any income that comes in. They allow adjustments against the cost of goods sold. In this situation, goods versus, just by definition, goods are not services, so you either can have it one way or you have it the other way. So this has been our, what we've been telling our clients is, basically pay your sales tax on the entire amount of your sales and deduct, and adjust your cost of goods sold on the full amount of your, so that you can, basically, you can't have it both ways, do it, so just assume that the sales tax should be paid and that you can fully adjust your cost of goods sold.
One question I have, on the dispensaries being able to upon request, which is for-profit. As nonprofits, I know this has come up a lot in legislatures, on other topics, nonprofits that currently have no obligation to pay property taxes, but as for-profits, they would, right? Am I not right on that?
No.
Please, you're really lovely. We probably have more, don't go too far.
Dispensaries in Maine are mutually beneficial corporations, known as 13B. It's essentially a condo association, mutual, whereas the 513C is denied cannabis providers by the federal government due to its status. So we pay property tax, we pay, like a full corporation, we are not allowed to deduct the retail aspect of it because it's considered trafficking, whereas the cost of goods are fully deductible. And where the caregivers don't have a retail outlet per se, and we think all of their cost of goods could be claimed, whereas my retail outlet, I cannot claim all of it.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Are there any additional questions on tax issues, while we have some real good tax experts here on this issue?
Anything else you'd like to add?
Is there, or is there anything else you'd like to add to this conversation?
No.
That we might not be smart enough to think of ourselves?
My son earlier in the day, it seems like this was a while ago, was talking about the caregivers, and basically what they want to do, they have been basically afraid to do sales tax forms, they're afraid to do income tax forms, they finally have gotten to the point where they want to be, it's their, they have an urge to be compliant and legitimate, so their fear of not doing anything is taken over by their urge to be legitimate. So I just want to let everybody know that they really, the caregivers that we've been dealing with, the urge for legitimacy and compliance is strong.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And thank you so much, you know, both of you for sticking around all day to, we didn't ask you some of these questions. Yes, yeah, if you'd like to come on up, please. Use yourself for the folks listening.